Started seven. All of a sudden, I was sitting at home thinking, I remember you guys discussing five o'clock.
Noted.
Got it.
Good evening. Welcome to our August twenty first, two thousand and twenty-three Special Board Meeting Work Session. Mr. Ternello, can you please call the roll?
Mrs. Bear?
Here.
Mr. Oskus?
Here.
Mrs. Schatzman?
Here.
Mrs. Menzer?
Here.
Mr. Reedy is running late. He's currently absent. We do have a quorum.
Item two A, approval of agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
Adam President, I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Do I hear a second?
Adam President, I will second that motion.
Discussion. Mr. Ternello?
Mrs. Bear?
Yes.
Mr. Oskus?
Yes.
Mrs. Schatzman?
Yes.
Mrs. Menzer?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
Moving on to item three A, Dr. Ward.
Take it away. Alright, so thanks for taking an hour or less of your time today on the first day of school to kick off this conversation today about, you know, the strategic direction of the district and gaining your insights as the governance structure for the district around some of the priority and focus areas for the year ahead. It has been a remarkable start today, absolutely exhausted, quite frankly, and so I don't get tired. And so I appreciate the grace of less enthusiasm today perhaps than normal, but we hit every single building today. And there was a lot that we should be brought up, a lot of energy, a lot of positivity. Our students are back, and I thought we'd start by looking at who they are because it's important for us to acknowledge who we are as a district. And so starting every school year with a clear picture of, you know, the seven thousand two hundred students that make it Willoughby Eastlake is really important for us. And so you'll see on the screen kind of how our students break down within the various subgroups that you see up there. There's a pretty picture I'm gonna click to real quick, but of note, there's the seventy-two-hundred. We went back and forth today. We finally got locked in on the right number was seventy-two-hundred. If you count all the kids we're responsible for, you know, those that are out of district as well as within district, the preschools captured in that number as well, we land around seventy-two-hundred. And so slightly up from about a year ago. And so important, important note. This is just a pretty kind of snapshot of that, but if you look at like the north-south picture to the left, that's like the gender breakdown, boy-girl, male-female. And then in the middle, you'll see the same picture from the chart we just looked at. Again, to the right, though, is where I want to call your attention. And so that, that blue box to the right would be thirty-nine percent. That is economically disadvantaged. Eighteen percent, the green box, is special education or gifted, I believe, gifted. And then on the bottom, you know, my eyesight is now failing me, we'll go over there. The gray box, which is eighteen percent, I believe, is the percentage special debt. And so that's just a general snapshot of who we are as a district as we start thinking about moving some of this work forward.
Do you know if economically disadvantaged, how it relates to like the poverty line? I, I think it probably represents free and reduced lunch, I'm guessing, but I'm, I've not done the research to know specifically how that relates to like the poverty line threshold.
Yeah, so I don't, I didn't do a deep dive into comparing outside of just straight off, you know, the website, how we reported it last year. And so, but something to look at for sure.
Thanks.
Yep. So that's who we are. This snapshot here, I like, I think in pictures, and so this is where I want to spend some time tonight getting your feedback and kind of, kind of unpacking this a little bit today. And so what you see here in the bottom part of that box, so those four boxes across the middle and then down the bottom, is the strategic plan as it currently exists. So when you think about those areas that are listed there, those priorities have been identified in the past as kind of key buckets, if you will, areas of focus, areas of importance to this district and this community. And so if you look to the left, bucket one is labeled academic excellence and student wellness. You know, bucket two is operations, safety, and fiscal responsibility. Bucket three is sustained community partnerships and engagement, and then bucket four is technology and digital innovation. The bottom, that final bucket, is collaborative culture, which you'll find also kind of in the strategic plan. And so each of those buckets, again, represent priorities that have been pre-identified. Part of the work this year is to listen to the community through coffee talks and through engagement and ask the question, are these priorities still the priorities and the focus areas? Right above that, you'll see these other two boxes that were added. The, the top box is that shared vision, you know, and so part of the work this year for the district is what are the skills and the experiences that our students should have after thirteen years in Willoughby Eastlake schools so that they can be successful in their world? And so that's that shared vision, that portrait of a graduate. We have, you know, two high schools, north and south. The question is, we have one graduate, though, and when a student leaves us after thirteen years, what are the skills that will make them successful and life-ready? And then the second is, what is our vision for learning? What are the things in this district that we believe are really important when it comes to how students learn? Is it workforce development? Is it career technical education? Is it preparing students for college? Is it making sure that they can read, write, communicate, think? Whatever those priorities are, we should work this year by listening to the community through all this engagement and developing that kind of coherent focus on the district's vision for what learning should look like. See, when we talk about building systems in the district, when we talk about being aligned, when we talk about being able to impact students at the core, it starts with understanding what we're building around so that we can go ahead and make sure we're aligned. And so I just want to stop for a minute and take, take a, a quick minute and kind of have, hear your thoughts during this work session on kind of some of these buckets and bins and, and some of the experiences you've had as a parent and a board member.
Was anyone here when the last strategic plan was written?
Yes.
What was the process for like how these categories were established?
They had a series of community meetings, and I think that was just prior to when COVID kind of came on the, well, came about. So, but there was a series of community meetings to get, gather input from community members.
Okay, thanks. Do you want to start then, since you were here?
As far as like the four, four blocks, I mean, the academic excellence, student wellness, fiscal responsibility, community engagement, and technology and digital innovation, I mean, I still see that most of those categories or all of those categories as being important. Now, I guess what specific goals in those categories? I'm not sure if they're all still important. I guess that might take some additional looking or research, gathering some feedback there. Do you want to just go down there?
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna say, I think all the information up there is important. One of the things I was thinking about is they don't necessarily tell me in the title what success looks like, which I would really like as both a parent and a board member is like, I can read that and I don't really know what they, like, I know what the words mean, but what is that bucket really supposed to signify in terms of like impact on our schools, on our students, that kind of stuff? And also the groupings don't make a ton of sense to me. Like, operation safety and fiscal responsibility is all in one, which I guess you could make a case for, but I don't know, fiscal responsibility to me and sustainability seems like a very distinct, separate bucket with its own kind of initiatives, like safety seems big enough to probably be its own bucket. So it's less for me about the organization and more about how can we use this? Because to me, it doesn't really feel usable right now.
I was gonna piggyback on that, like Jamie said, we can read what the titles say, but what is the definition of academic excellence? What has to be met to reach that goal? And then what is student wellness? I guess, I mean, is it to keep kids from getting sick, mental health? I mean, what is, how is that defined as well?
So I have four things. I'll start at the bottom. One of the things that I heard is that we had people from the community.
Right.
Went to a few trainings at OSBA and sat in on a bunch of meetings of targeted strategic planning development. And one of the most impactful things that I heard across these sessions from the parents, students, and administrators that presented was feedback from the alumni, recent alumni, those of them four years, to say, hey, this is how I've applied my, you know, first thirteen years of learning, whether that be in a collegiate setting and/or in practical workforce, and ask them what would they have liked to see stay the same and be different? Because they're in it, like, they are applying what we've taught them. So I'd like to see alumni having a larger voice in our development moving forward. I think that's, that's one thing as a board member. But I think when we look at academic excellence, I think we need to be very careful on how we define it. So I'm actually looking at the strategic plan now, and you know, we've got two, four, six, nine bullet points. Nice Bloom's Taxonomy of words in there, okay? Academic excellence doesn't look the same for every student, and it's not necessarily getting an A. An A isn't, your final score isn't your mean of measure. It's the progress you've made from where you started that I would like to see more represented in our plan. So if we have a student who maybe is in second grade and is a year and a half behind in reading, and he makes it up a year, we have evidence that there was academic excellence on his behalf, although he is not scoring at his current age level per the standards. So I would like to see how we measure academic excellence to be considered, not just defining it. Here.
Perfect timing.
Real light conversation here, sir.
And I think from, from my perspective, how we measure it, I also think we need to have how we communicate it. Because as a parent, I think what I would like to see in our strategic plan is don't just tell me my student is a year and a half behind on their reading. Let's champion the effort that's been put in that they've made up a year of progress in ten months. So I think the way we communicate academic excellence also needs to be considered.
So Erin, we're talking about the existing strategic plan is listed in the bottom half of that graphic on the screen. Those buckets or bins have been the current kind of categories, themes, or priorities. And I'm just asking for feedback on the, the buckets, the bins, the themes, and kind of just the, the first, you know, kind of conversation around that. Because we'll follow up with the next one, which is the whole point of listening and learning this year is to make sure that those priorities are the right priorities per the community and our stakeholders.
I did have two more.
Oh, sorry.
No, so how we measure academic excellence and how we communicate excellence to families individually, I think, is, I would like to see incorporated. Because that's, as a parent, that's what matters to me, right? I need to see that my child's progressing. When I get those scores and I look at it, I'm like, oh, look where they fall on the bar graph. I honestly just kind of throw them out like, great, this is a beautiful, thank you for the time and wasting paper, but I know my child's worth outside of being scored in other buckets. So how do we communicate that? Operations, I know that one of the things that we were made aware of last year was the current needs for repairs and/or upgrades in our buildings, and that is not something we can avoid. And our strategic plan needs to accommodate that we have aging buildings in our district. And those aging buildings may not be able to keep pace with the technology to uphold our academic excellence. So if you don't have, if you're tripping breakers in rooms, that's gonna be a problem if we're increasing technologies. The last thing is with technology, it's a part of our strategic plan as well. I would like to see it better defined as a tool, not the delivery system for curriculum. So how is that tool being used to enhance education, not to be the only deployment method for education? So.
Great stuff. Thank you. How you doing?
Good.
Good.
What are your thoughts about the buckets? As a parent and as a board member, what would you like considered as we start discussing our strategic plan?
Well, since I missed out on that first part, I'm not sure if you already covered that.
We're all just giving our own individual opinions, even if redundant.
The reading glasses as well. The, when it comes to the operations and safety and stuff like that, one big concern that, that I had last year when we toured the buildings was there were some students that were letting people in the buildings, and a concern for me is what can we do to prevent that when it comes to making sure that the schools remain safe? You know, we've got the, the laws that we have to abide for fire safety and stuff like that. So how we can get that message, message across or what we can do security-wise? I know Homeland Security came in and everything, but how do we account for students or the let-in family? I know at graduation, there was some concerns about family members getting tickets that came to the graduations, and after we had left, there was some, some tension that was going on over at Captain Stadium. So when it comes to the operational security, that's one thing that was a big concern of mine. I think the, the technology that we've got going, the one-for-one with the students, I want to make sure that we are able to continue providing that. I know that there's some students that struggle a lot with, whether it's power cords or the computers going down. So I'd like to hear your ideas on how we're gonna make sure that we're able to maintain that one-to-one for the students. And then, of course, we're always talking about that collaborative culture. So I really want to see that continue to improve. I think that the coffee talks are gonna be a great way of doing that. So I'd like to discuss more. What, what more are we gonna do and how are we gonna go about doing that?
Yeah, so the, the, if we're really serious about listening when we get out there, then we also have to be really serious about reevaluating this plan as the year goes on to ask ourselves, is it simple and focused enough on the right priorities to move this district forward and continue to make sure that we're performing at the highest possible level on all measures? And so my thought would be we'd move through the year listening, engaging, and we have a slide coming up that'll show you how I think we can go about doing that so that by the end of the year, we can be more prepared to answer the question, are these the right buckets? Are these the right buckets? And can we build the right systems around those buckets so it's simple and easy for our community to understand? What are our priorities and how are we assuring that we're making progress?
Do you think that, I heard kind of a theme throughout all of us, even though we had different specifics, which is like, what does that mean and how will we measure it? Do you think with these existing priorities that we have up there, while we're listening and learning, we could at least in the interim try to answer that question for ourselves so we can all be running in the same direction and agree that we're at least going forward with these current priorities and talking the same language?
Yeah, for sure. You know, right now, this is the language we're using, right? And so we're gonna continue to use that language. I think when you look at the existing strategic plan and the initiatives listed underneath, it's overwhelming. It's overwhelming, and I'm not sure people are gonna understand. We talk about building systems that are coherent and focused around student learning, which is the bullseye here. We're gonna have to give ourselves grace as we work through this year, but I think it's fair to say we're gonna use this language for the year ahead with one goal that we're working on right now in each of those areas versus a laundry list of goals that you see listed.
Yeah.
That's, that's our priority right now, to focus on, do one thing really well within each of these areas so we can better understand. Again, listening and learning, when we, requires that I do something that I'm not good at, which is not talk. And so I'm gonna get out there beginning Wednesday with the intention of not having the answers to all the questions that will be asked as part of the year ahead. I think in the first one hundred days, though, some themes will emerge. The hope is at the end of that one hundred days, we'll be able to do a presentation at one of the board meetings on what themes we heard throughout these one hundred days, and that will help us as we're trying to make sense of this moving forward.
I, I have a question. So as we are working within these boxes, how do you view how you're gonna report on how we're meeting these goals? Is this gonna be something in your, your weekly email to us or?
Yeah, so first, we'll get the goals in place, which we're gonna work on. And then once the goals are in place, we'll, we'll share our progress on those goals publicly because people should know that we're making progress in these areas. So we've got to be able to do two things, right? It's during transition in this kind of entry plan, we've got to be able to evaluate the existing plan, make sure the priorities are the right priorities, and then make sure that moving forward, that we have really clear goals. And those goals should be pretty ambitious, but we should be able to achieve them. And if we walked outside here, people should understand what we're talking about. That, that's the litmus test for me in education as a parent. If I'm talking about something like tier-one intervention and no one understands what I'm talking about, it doesn't matter. Now, it's good stuff. Tier-one intervention, I could talk all day about, but if we can't explain it and it doesn't help our students learn, then I think we're doing a disservice. I, I think people put plans together sometimes that sound really good, but in all practicality, their ability to translate to the classroom where it matters the most is kind of where they fall short. And so the hope is we can simplify the focus, but it starts by listening to make sure the priorities we've established to begin with are the right ones. And that's where I would ask your help this year, as we listen and as we hear from people and as we engage people, you'll hear themes. I can guarantee these things will come up. Academic excellence and accountability will come up because it's what we do. Student wellness will come up. It's what we do. You know, operations will come up. You know, do we have a plan for that? You know, and that will come up. Safety will come up. So, you know, these things will come up. I don't know if technology and digital innovation will. That's what I'd like to know more, but I heard it stated as a tool here. Does that support academic excellence? Those are the types of subtle shifts we can make as we go through the year and listen. You know, is student safety, student wellness, is that a separate bin? I don't know. That's where we can hear, we can listen and learn. And I, I would imagine at the end, we're gonna tweak some of these categories slightly based on what we hear. I, I don't, I don't think we're off-base, if that makes sense, but we should make sure.
So if we're reflecting upon the process, so I think there's three buckets by which to receive information to then find these common themes. So obviously, parents.
Yep.
Students, community members. Is there a way upon receipt of, in the first hundred days, this feedback? Can we put them in those buckets to then identify themes within stakeholder groups? And I guess then, my question is, we know the coffee talks will provide parents and community members a way by which to provide feedback. How are we soliciting? Well, I guess student and staff maybe fall into the same bucket. How are we soliciting student and staff feedback on top of coffee talks?
I feel like this is a segue to your next slide.
It is. But before I go on, as it's now twenty-two minutes into my hour-long work session today, in the interest of being mindful the first day of school and the fact that we should probably go home and ask our kids how school went today, I just want to go back to the, the first two buckets at the top. The two at the top are new for us, though, to really create our portrait of a graduate, what we want from our graduates when they graduate is year-long work and year-long engagement of this, all seven communities, internal and external. What are the skills that our students are going to need when they graduate to be successful in their world so they can work, be ready for college, and be ready for life? And that answer to those questions comes from people that are out there. Parents, the three, the three groups we just talked about, parents, our community members, and our students, and, and I would say our alumni. We have, at opening convocation, we asked, so we had a thousand people together in one place, really remarkable, if you want to shut down the road on Thompson Road, try and move one thousand people towards North High School at eight AM on a Friday morning, not a good idea, but we did it. And we asked our alumni that are employed in the district to stand up at convocation. I mean, it is remarkable to see how many of our own employees actually graduated from our schools. This is a really good group of people to tap into, to talk about that historical piece and kind of that, that pride. So we're gonna have to engage groups in that first bucket, and then the second bucket, obviously, you know, how do kids learn? What is, what do we believe about learning? And are we a learning organization? Is that really our priority? And so those two will support, hopefully, you see there on the bottom, the other buckets. But how are we gonna do that? Let's take a look. So, hey, look at that. Quick, quick look at some engagement strategies here. So, and then again, I welcome feedback because we may be missing something. We're gonna start the hundred-day coffee series on Wednesday. It is going to be Wednesday nights. We, we published the first series. This is the listen phase. And so it's gonna be three questions, listen, and I'm gonna stick around afterwards for those people that want to talk more. At the end of a hundred days, we're going to take what we heard and kind of do the second round of coffee talks, which will be on topical themes. So we'll do a coffee talk on security, if that's what people want to know about. We'll do a coffee talk on student academics, if that's what people want to talk about. We'll do a coffee talk on fiscal responsibility, if that's what people want to talk about. So we'll try and do themed coffee talks on the heels of the first Listen and Learn Tour so that we can do a little bit of presentation on what we know and then listen some more. And so that's kind of how the coffee talk series, so it'll go every week, and then it'll start becoming more, you know, intermittent in the second semester. It'll be colder and people will be welcoming warmer days. So we'll try and go monthly in the second, the second series. Again, the purpose there is to let people have a chance to be heard, and we think that's important.
So I guess my question is, in reviewing all of these, so when we look at our staff, let's just start with staff and student. Are we gonna send out like a written solicitation or an open link to provide feedback? Like, how are we going to collect and organize the feedback that we receive from these various groups?
Yeah, so we're gonna use, we're gonna leverage technology, so we have the same three questions, and we're gonna keep asking them. So because they're the same three questions, you know, what are you proud of and what's the history of the district? You know, we need all the story. You know, people, people who've been around in this district for a long time understand the history and the traditions, and they're quite proud of their schools. And so they should have a chance to share that story. Because what that helps me do as someone who's sitting over here is understand, well, you, you know, you don't want to mess with things that are going well, right? If people are really, really happy about some things we do, we probably should hear those things. The second question is, what are the challenges that we face? I think we need to be honest that we probably have some challenges and opportunities that we're not capitalizing on. And so that's a chance for people to give some constructive feedback around areas that, from their perspective, you know, will give us some, some insight into that. And the third is, again, the question that gets at those first two boxes, which is what, what, what should our students be doing? What are the skills that they need? What are the pathways and experiences that they should be exposed to while they're with us so they are prepared? And so those would be things where we've heard, you know, just doing this already a couple times, we've heard things like time management. You know, you know, are students prepared to go into the world and manage time? You know, self-regulation? Do students know when to take a deep breath and pause before they go and tell people what they're really thinking? Because you can't do that when you go to work. And so those are the themes that have been coming up, because we did this with all the staff on Friday, as kind of a, a quick, a, a kind of entry into this conversation. And so just looking up there, we have the, that community advisory. Did I get there wrong again, or is that right? Community advisory, I mean, I always, I always.
I think that's correct.
Okay, good. Thank you, John. I got it wrong once, and I, it's stuck in my head with the, the wrong word. But so that, we've got about eight people so far that have expressed an interest in that group. We're gonna continue to broadcast to a wider net soon. You know, I'm gonna put together a business leader roundtable for October, November. So many businesses that want to get together and talk about what employees need to be doing on the work. There's many businesses that want to get together and talk about what employees need to be doing on the work, in the work site. I'm willing to listen. You know, I'm not the expert on when you go work at some of our, you know, companies that line Lakeshore, what they're looking for in employees. We should ask, like, what are the skills? And so, we'll put them together. We're going to meet twice. We'll do a civic leader roundtable. We'll get our seven communities and the leaders within our communities together, ask the same questions. The one I'm looking most forward to, and matter of fact, met someone today, Jaden, student superintendent advisory team at Eastlake Middle. Nice young man. I asked him if he'd be part of this. He said yes, resounding yes. The student superintendent advisory team is going to be, we're going to get together, give these kids some pizza, and talk about their experience. How's school from your perspective? I don't think we talk to our kids enough.
Like, all ages?
Yeah, well, probably five would be the youngest, because outside of five, it gets, the fifth grade, it gets hard. I should clarify, fifth grade to 12th grade.
I was like, you're going to take on five years.
No. I've seen that work in my wife's classroom, and I know, I can't.
This past Saturday, it was. John and I were at the music festival, and that's exactly what we were doing, is walking around and asking the kids. And the feedback that we were getting was, it opened the door of communication with the parents, because the parents are like, "Come on, you can think of something else." And so, I think that, you said, fifth grade?
Fifth grade would be the youngest, yep.
Okay.
And so.
And it'll be, like, parent-opt-in?
Yep. Give them a field trip form, we'll send a nice little letter, and make sure that they want to be part of it. But most importantly, they stay on it until they graduate. And so, for me, I have to add new fifth graders every year, and I get to send seniors out into the world, but I get to watch these kids grow up. And that, to me, I've done this before for seven years. I watched a complete generation of kids before my eyes watch their classrooms change, and the experiences they have changed, because they were part of the conversation. And so, that group is my favorite. We have a parent superintendent advisory team. We're starting to put that together right now. This would be all of our booster organizations. So, we're trying to hit every school. If you are part of a booster organization, could you designate a member that would be part of this group? Because we want to talk about, we've got all these groups that are competing for resources, and they're kind of all running in different directions. You know, to get fundraising in place, to support athletics, and support the arts, and support academics. But sometimes, they're doing it at the cost of another group. You have three kids in three different buildings, and you're being asked three times to raise money. It's just a great conversation to have with all of these leaders that are trying to do this great work for kids. And so, those are kind, and then, we're going to do some senior center coffee talks. I really think it's important to get out there. So, that's kind of the external, outside engagement to the left. So, the right is inside. We did a veteran educator breakfast. We met with our 30-plus-year-experienced educators on Thursday before school starts. It was absolutely incredible. Our most senior educators had a lot to say about this district, their pride in this district, and the work they're doing. And quite frankly, I was blown away. We're working on putting a district leadership team together. We're hoping that our unions and district administration can meet four times a year to talk about strategic visionary conversations. This is an idea that I just think is really important, that we all have to be having these conversations at a really high level. We begin next week, staff meeting work sessions, so we're going to meet every staff. We're going to go out, the whole cabinet, dragging them all along. And we're going to sit down, and we're going to listen to our teachers and our support staff, and ask those three questions, and keep asking them. But this time, it'll be more intimate, so I'll be able to actually engage. I'm going to work in the buildings once a week, so, they all designated a spot for me. They're so wonderful. I said, "Give me a spot," even our warmer ones. So, I'm going to go out there, and I can answer emails and do the things I do out there. It's not hard. Zach's working, he put a curriculum leadership team together. It's going to be bi-weekly, and bi-weekly, bi-monthly. This would be our principal leaders, our central office curriculum leaders. Again, to have these important conversations of alignment around the district. Then, the last three, there are just three groups, teachers and Zach's department. Literacy Task Force, like, what do we believe pre-K to 12 about how kids learn to read and write in this district? We should probably have that formally articulated. The same is true about math. How do we teach math? What do we believe about math? Are our kids making progress in math? So, this group is going to work to put some frameworks in place, so we can at least know what the scoreboard is. And then, last is my favorite group, is, like, what could education be, if we dreamed a little bit? Close your ears, Mr. Treasurer. And so, when we talk about innovation in education, like, what are some, can we empower staff to try things that are best for kids? And that group is, we'll call them the Dreamers. And so, they're going to meet this year. And again, those last three will fall under the assistant superintendent, but I'll be sitting pretty close for those, because I like that stuff. So, that's kind of our, just quick snapshot of the engagement strategy for the year. We'd love to hear your feedback. What we're missing, because we might be missing something.
I'm just excited to hear kind of updates, and again, I know it's a work in progress. So, we'll let you figure out when it makes sense to report out. But I think board meetings are a great chance for us to hear, you know, shorter snippets, and then, we can ask follow-up questions, get follow-up reports as needed. But I would like to be, you know, once we get a little bit of the year under our belts, to kind of have a rotating schedule of hearing about these things.
There is one thing that I, I'm sure you've got it incorporated somewhere in here. And I don't mean to beat a dead horse, but.
Wait, wait. I think I know what you're going to say. Go ahead.
I'm sure you do.
I do.
Some form of a mental health-type task force.
Absolutely. I don't see that up there.
I don't. That's why, because what we ask of the teachers and stuff like that, many times, they have to sometimes be part-time counselor and things like that. And I think that that's, that's going to be extremely important, because I still hear people that, you know, I brought up last time.
So, I omitted it from up here. There's two items, because the words on the screen started to get really small if you keep putting words up there. I found, there's two. So, we joined, we're part of a, in the consortium of schools, the ESC, part of a wellness PLC that Heather and myself are going to be part of. In the district, Brian Patrick is going to be meeting monthly with the assistant principals for two purposes. To look at data around student conduct, and then, to look at data around student wellness. And so, I think those would be the starting places for gauging the initial kind of overall picture of things. But it's an area we've got to keep focused on, for sure.
Okay.
The other thing I thought of is soliciting feedback from other districts who do things well, or have been in similar places to us, or have struggled with certain things, which I think is also something you're addressing, and probably didn't make it on the slide.
Yeah, so, we were part of that design team through Batel and SOAR, which will help us kind of make a networking connection across districts around best practices and things that we can share as well. Because let's not sell ourselves short here. There's a lot of good practices going on at Willby Eastlake right now. I mean, I just went one lap for the last three weeks. We do a lot of things that we should also get better at telling, and that's why telling our story is really important as well, so. All right. Any other thoughts on engagement? It's going to be fun. My family thanks you for the opportunity.
I just, I want to thank you. I mean, I saw you this morning when dropping the kids off. Then, I saw other photos at other locations, and I'm like, "How is he getting back and forth to all these places?"
You could do it. Turns out, you could do it every single campus.
Yeah, you did.
Takes all day, but you can do it.
I just want to tell you, thank you very much for your engagement. I mean, you were right out there shaking hands, bumping fists, and so, thanks.
Yeah, we had a lot of fun this morning. I even did a dance party at one of the schools. That one was not recorded. It's actually at Eastlake Middle, ironically enough.
I would like to make a request that all dance parties be recorded in the future.
Yes. That's Gina. I said, "Whoa." Gina said, "We won't put that one out there." I go, "I wouldn't. People will throw me out of here." Just a couple, just really quick, I don't, this part's, I want to share what the administrative teams have been talking about, so you know, as the governance, you know, body for the district, what we have talked about for the last month and a half. One word, we want to be a learning organization. Like, learning is the bullseye. Learning and student wellness and well-being, and taking care of our kids, is the target. And we know we're winning when we're talking about that all the time. How are our students are doing? Are they learning? And are we making the progress that we need? And so, we talked, I had them rate these five areas, which are characteristics of a learning organization. And I had the cabinet do this, and I had the administrative team do this. And so, you know, we talk about mission, vision, values, and goals. All the arrows pointing at student learning. And so, I'll send a summary of what the ratings looked like, so you can see it. And it was just a very unscientific survey. I mean, it said, rated on zero to 10. You know, are we collaborative, and do we focus on learning when we collaborate? You know, are we curious about what best practice is in our profession right now in education? And what is the current state? Do we give people permission in this organization to do what's best for kids? And then, lastly, do we look at results? Do we have a, any, do we look at measures to make sure whatever decisions we make are the right ones for kids? And so, again, we had, we had a really good, in-depth conversation around these kind of core values of a learning organization. And it was really, really some insightful, in-depth discussion from the instructional leaders in this district, so. Any thoughts or comments before we, we're on track here? I'm going to tell you right now, this is going to be good for the Ward family.
I really love the action orientation or learning by doing. And we know that there's sometimes that learning needs to occur, but when we look at the SOI model, so, really doing that approach is very effective, to do it in an interactive, engaging way versus watching a video, or doing a mentee-um, or. Learning by doing, I would love to see explored a little bit more.
We're good? I could go on. We'll skip that one, but we'll end with these last two. So, the question of all questions is, when you talk about academics in this district, we also shared these four questions with all of our administrative team. We shared this with our cabinet. We shared this with our teachers through Zach. When you talk about improving student learning, these really are the four essential questions we're going to keep asking for the next couple of years. The first is, what do we want students to know, be able to do, and deeply understand? So, we have to be very clear about what we're asking of our students. Like, what do we really want them to know and be able to do? And we should be able to answer that question. The question is, how do we know that they're learning? Like, what is the scoreboard? What are the measures? What are the things that we can point to that tell us that, in fact, that they're learning? That we're not just covering content or moving through a course, but that we can actually say, "Kids are learning." The third is, what do we do when they're not learning? Like, do we have systems in place to address the fact that some kids are going to struggle when they learn? And do we support kids through that process? And what are those systems? And the last is, what do we do when they do get it? How do we make sure all kids have a chance for enrichment, deeper learning, the opportunity to explore areas of interest and their passions? We're going to keep looking at these four questions until we have really, really good answers to them, and we have really good systems to support them. Because at the root, you don't improve student outcomes, and you don't improve student learning unless you have a really good system around these four questions. They've never let me down. In 25 years in education, being really intentional about answering these with good, hearty systems to support student learning can be all the difference in the end. And so, we're going to spend some time, as you're talking about, what it means to be a professional learning community. This is going to be mostly through the assistant superintendent, but I can assure you, he will be up here a couple of times this year to share, again, how we're building systems around this. I think we're really good at number one. Like, I can tell you right now, we have really good curriculum aligned in the district. The other three, we have to continue to look at, and explore, and listen, and learn, and figure out where we're at, so.
And this is the book, the chapters you've been sharing weekly, or every so often?
Yes, there's more. Don't worry. I just want small doses, but if we're reading it, I want to share it. It's about really building a culture focused on excellence and learning. Because I think this community deserves nothing but the best.
I think it's important to point out that the probably most easily accessible thing for someone who is not working in the district to access, to know how students are doing, are like these OD reports or that kind of data. And I guess that would just challenge us to look at, does that really show us what our kids know, and whether they are learning and growing and able to apply it? And I would say that it doesn't mean they're not good, but they do not do that. And so, I like that we are looking deeper and trying to say, what do these things really mean? Because I think any data, you can look at numbers on a piece of paper, and you can tell whatever story you want to tell. But it's like, why are we doing it? Do we understand what this actually means? I think those are really important conversations that we've been waiting to have in this district. I'm very excited.
I think I mentioned it to you before, but, you know, there's all these acronyms and various terminology, and I have to look it up every time, just to make sure, okay, that's what it is, you know? So, it is, it can be very confusing, so whatever we can do to make it a little bit more clearer, like you stated, would be great.
Yeah, we talk about accountability. We're going to talk about what's the scoreboard we're going to use to determine that our kids are achieving on grade level. They're growing, at least one year's growth each year, and they're engaged. And that third one is the most important one. If we are not engaged in school, and don't love coming here, then good luck on the achievement and the growth. And you'll see some data in a minute that suggests that Willby Eastlake is really good at the growth. Like, we have a lot to be proud of. And when we talk about coming out of a pandemic, the gaps that kids had were quite large, especially in math and ELA. And when you look at the ability for our teachers in this district to add more than a year's growth, so you can close gaps, Willby Eastlake's got some things they should be proud of. And that makes me pretty proud as well. And we'll take a quick look at that. But what is the scoreboard, essentially? Like, what are the measures we're going to use? And they should be both external and internal, to tell us that we are making the necessary growth achievement, and that our kids are engaged. And again, if you're not engaged, woo, good luck on the first two. My kids were engaged all summer with their iPads. So, we're pleased, we're pleased that today, they were engaged with mathematics and the other things. Other thoughts here, before we kind of look at the one, we got one last slide, and let's do it. I like that. I got the signal. We're going for it. So, just a quick overview of how the state of Ohio currently ranks and sorts and rates schools. So, it's a five-star scale. And so, they moved to the five-star scale about two years ago, and on that new measure, three stars means you met the state standard. So, in the state of Ohio, again, one particular scoreboard on one particular day, if you're a three, you've met the state standard. If you're above a three, obviously, you exceeded it. If you're below a three, that means you've got an area for improvement. And so, you'll see our buildings listed on the left. You'll see the overall rating that you'll see published in a couple of weeks for the buildings to the left, and then, you'll see the stars for achievement and growth. Again, two of the three measures, because they don't measure engagement. It's a trickier metric. But when you look at, just, again, we've got a lot to be proud of. You look at SOI, five stars, you know, Willowood Middle, 3.5, Eastlake Middle, 3.5, Willby Middle, 2.5, Royal View, three, Jefferson, three, Grant, 3.5, Longfellow, three, Edison, 3.5, South, 3.5, North, three. So, most of our buildings have met the minimum state standard when it comes to overall rating. Achievement, if you go down that column, again, you'll see the same star system. I'm not going to read it to you. Obviously, you can read those. And again, those would be on the math, ELA, science, and social studies assessments. One day typically, or two days in April, kids gather together on a computer, and they got to take a test. So, to the point earlier, while it's good information for us, we need to also have a much more holistic answer to the question, are our kids achieving? And we should probably know that weekly and monthly versus once a year. And so, there's work to do for us internally to develop that scoreboard, but that's what the state will tell us. And then, growth, again, anything above three, three would be one year's growth. Outside of that, you're making a pretty significant difference in adding more growth in a year. The district overall is rated five, you know, and so, you'll see that on the state report card. That's pretty impressive. It's hard to be a district rated five in growth. That's an elite club. For achievement, you know, it, again, three or above, overall, the district rating is 3.5. So, as a district, if you take all that together, what you'll see published in a couple of weeks is 3.5. And so, I think there's a lot to celebrate in there. There's also a lot of opportunity in there. And that's what organizations that are committed to learning look themselves in the eye, and say, "Where are the areas we can get better?" And there are areas we can get better. But I think we need to give ourselves grace, too. We've got to build some systems. We've got to do a lot of listening. And I think there's a lot of possibility here. So, that's the beginning. We're going to start each year, hopefully, with a snapshot of where we're at, so you can see it. And longitudinally, we should hopefully see their students continue to get better over time, so. Questions or thoughts? Because that's all I got.
I should have looked this up in advance, but I don't know if you have this off the top of your head, but when you're measuring this, like, achievement and growth, is it a individual, is there, like, longitudinal tracking of individual students? Or is it more, like, the whole body? So, essentially, could you score really well in growth if you just brought up the bottom, and like, you were never enriching the top students, or not?
So, it's actually easier, so you'll see more growth with students with bigger gaps, right? So, that's how this works. So, it's actually harder to see growth with students that are at the top. So, it's in aggregate. They'll take all of the kids. They use some complicated wizardry that I can't possibly begin to explain here. That's why I had a coordinator back in the day. But the point being that if you, if you're adding value to a student, you're adding at least one year's worth of growth, is what the data will try and tell. And for kids that are already above grade level. will try and tell. And for kids that are already above grade level, it's harder to show growth for those kids. And so what we're saying holistically is, it breaks, if you're rated at five for growth, you're doing a nice job, generally speaking, with most kids, moving them along.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I don't think it's any surprise that we see, like, the scores for SOI. I know one thing that we hear a lot of, and I know that it's been discussed, is how can we replicate SOI throughout the district? And like you said, you know, there's, there's things to, that we can definitely grow at. So I guess that's just one thing, is just to continue to see, how can we implement that to improve the growth in some of the ones that maybe are closer to the two or at two, and...
Yeah, I think we're going to drill in and start getting to work here. These folders over here represent each building, and, you know, we're going to start looking a little closer at each building. And again, every building has a great story to tell. There's just areas we're going to need to align and polish a little bit, but there's a lot of possibilities here. And so, you know, just to summarize here really quickly, we're going to be listening and learning a lot. And that's really important for this district, that people feel heard right now, and should feel heard and have a system to be heard regularly. That's the coffee talk. That's the opportunity to put those groups and structures together. And we may add additional groups as we go forward in the next couple of years, if we find that these are there. But as we listen and learn, we're going to try and synthesize all that information and share with you. And then there's various groups that are going to have to help sift through that to make sense of it. And as this governance structure, I think is a really important first start for setting the course for a district. Because it starts with the board, and then we move right down the line when we talk about students that are learning and really becoming the district that I know we can.
I think we're all in support of empowering yourself and the other educators who are the ones in the room who will make these decisions. I love that we're also getting parents involved as well. So with the best intention and process and frameworks, at the end of the day, if the people who have to understand what that means for their child don't understand it, like, I think that needs to be one of the top priorities. If there's anything I can throw out there, and I know this is a larger conversation, 15 minutes once a year as a parent-teacher conference is not enough time for an educator to clearly articulate their approach to working with a child and/or give feedback, like a two-way feedback loop. I know, once again, it's a much bigger ask, but parents want to go to those conferences. They want to sit. But for 15 minutes, and if they're running behind in the meeting before, they'll never get a snapshot and/or engagement on their part to help the teacher, help the student. So I would really love to see some discussions when you're with your parent group and/or with the teachers, to see how can we better provide opportunity for parents and educators to talk about the progress of their child.
Systems work, for sure. We got to look at the systems we have in place and build them, if you build them.
They will go.
That's good stuff. Good movie. One of my favorite three, actually. All right.
Mr. Treasurer, sir?
Um, yes, we can go to 4A adjournment. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Under an hour.
Anyone? Motion to adjourn?
I motion to adjourn.
Do I hear a second?
I second that motion to adjourn.
Discussion?
I would just like to say again, thank you. What you've done in this short amount of time is amazing, and it's kind of hard to believe that your first day was less than one month ago, when we're sitting here having these kind of conversations that we've all been wanting for so very long. And please let us know what we can do to support you. I feel like this was a lot about asking us what we needed, but also we want to have that be reciprocal and, what is it, collaborative culture. I see it on the screen, so.
Nothing else? Mr. Tarnello?
Mrs. Bear?
Yes.
Mr. Eady?
Yes.
Mr. Roskis?
Yes.
Mrs. Schatzman?
Yes.
Mrs. Mincer?
Yes.
You're adjourned at 5:52 PM.